Six thirty, call the meeting order, ask clerk to take.
Mordini?
Here.
Sarchet?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
DeBorak?
First item of the agenda is approval of the agenda, have no additions, corrections, deletions, et cetera, take a motion.
So.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Motion carries, next item of the agenda is public comments, time and place for comments for any item other than those in a public hearing, here's anyone who wishes to address the comments this time. Hearing none or seeing none, moving on to item five, consent agenda, take a motion. Move, second. Discussion. Roll call.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini? Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries, next item is new business under new business action item, action item number one, crossroads lakes. This is the time and place to close a regular meeting and open a public hearing for the rezoning request, crossroads lake, planned utility development, the C two commercial development, I'll ask the clerk when the notice is published.
November third.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
This time I'd ask staff to make a report.
The council will recall that this area was a part of a larger rezoning in an area called Crossroads at the Lakes. This has been zoned commercial for various different times and this before you tonight adds another five feet to the east side of property. P and Z held a meeting on this and actually set it up as a hearing and there was nobody for or against it that way. This, this does impact the PUD master plan and you'll be taking a look at that as item D. And with that Kathleen, I don't know if there's anything you would like to add or...
Yeah, I don't think so, I mean, P and Z recommend approval of it, but anything else appears to be normal. Yeah, Erin is here.
Erin Oladike, this is the Indiana judge, this is thirty-four oh five. You're tied on behalf of the project development, this is a specific document that shows the area in question, or stress on their own. You have to answer your questions.
I think further to the P and Z's meeting, I think from watching it, they also appreciated the fact we're adding some additional commercials to that area, potentially taking care, take away. That was part of the reason that they were in full support of that.
I just wanted to make the same comment, that the P and Z passed it unanimously and they think a gain in commercial is, although it's not a lot, it's still a gain in commercial ground, seemed pretty pleased about.
Is anyone here who wishes to be heard for or against the proposed rezoning? Questions or comments from this group? This time I need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting.
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries, item B, consider motion to approve first reading ordinance two thousand seventeen eleven hundred approving rezoning from planned utility development to C two commercial district. Motion.
So move.
Second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Motion carries, item C is an optional, consider motion to suspend the rule that requires readings of the ordinance on three separate dates, approve the second, third reading of the ordinance and send it on publication or posting as required by law.
So move.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, please. Oh, go ahead.
Um, I know White Sign here has given us the option, but has the developer requested? Anything be fast track?
If at all possible, yes. And I did think they were going to be here tonight and do not see, have conversation with them this afternoon. And they thought they were going to be here.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries, item D, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand seventeen one twenty-six revising the PUD master.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries, item two Deer Haven plat one and plat two, it's time to close a regular meeting and open a public hearing for vacation of sanitary and storm sewer easement Deer Haven plat one and plat two, ask the clerk when the notice is published.
November third.
Any written comments for or against?
No, sir.
Perfect, this time I'd like staff to make a report.
I'll start off, some talking if you like. Council will recall that we have, we had had before this area now called Deer Haven, we had sanitary sewer running through there and storm sewer, storm sewer. I know several of the council will recall actually helped with the drainage of the original part of town. That, that alignment did not match the alignment that is now in the ground and will subsequently be approved at a later date. But what we're doing is vacating the original and you'll be accepting the new storm sewer and sanitary sewer alignments when you accept public approval. So we don't get, we didn't get rid of them, we just have them in a different place.
Additional comments?
The new easement is going to hit on the final plat.
Right, and they've already been, those plats have already been reported, so they're up right now, so if you're free to then go ahead and vacate these easements.
Question, this punch list we were given denied, if I'm counting right, there's over thirty items on this.
Yeah, that's not necessarily, the punch list is related to accepting the public improvements, not to vacate the easement. So, the punch, punch list is related to item D.
All you're doing on this one is vacating to each.
In the order on this, from what we had done before, just some changes that have come up recently, or just seems that that were changed.
This is, this was planned from when they first put the preliminary plat in.
It's been a while.
Anyone present who wishes to be heard for, for or against vacation of the easement? Further comments from up here? Need a motion to close the public hearing and reopen the regular meeting?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Motion carries, item B, consider motion to approve the first reading of ordinance two thousand seventeen twelve hundred approving vacation to existing sanitary sewer and storm sewer easements in Deer Haven plat one and plat two.
So move.
Second. Questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries, item C is an optional, consider motion to suspend the rule that requires readings of the ordinance on three separate dates, approve the second, third reading of the ordinance and send it on post, for publication or posting as required by law.
So move. Second.
So all hands questions?
Go for it.
Does he have to do, has that been requested just from a timing perspective?
It actually has not been requested, however, since there is, virtually what they did is they took pipe out of the ground here, put new pipe in the ground here. So, nobody's hurt, it's just, and the easement maintains no significant what's the word I'm looking, it's, it's really insignificant at this point in time.
And it cleans it up because those plat, new plats have already been reported, so they, it'll make it cleaner from a title scale.
Yep, just want to get the logic behind, we weigh these, consider weighing these. Good question.
Motion and second, take a roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Motion carries. Item D, public improvements. Item one under D, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand seventeen one twenty-seven accepting the public improvements, Gary.
Thank you, Mayor. A punch list was generated again today, those items that are highlighted in yellow are still to be undertaken. As an alternate, because we have passed the final plat of one and two, is to go on to resolution twenty seventeen one twenty-eight. And then, when the public improvements are done, and talking to John earlier this evening, he does believe that we will have those by our next council meeting, which is in two weeks. So, resolution twenty seventeen one twenty-eight allows the building permits that we have on this project to allow them to start their work and to get foundations in, that type of thing. In two weeks' time, then we should be able to accept the public improvements, at which time, all of the bonds will come in to play and all of the other things that are waiting for that finer, final trigger.
So they expect to have all these done?
In two weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
Man, I'm not saying they can't, I'm just saying there's lots of things here. With the agreement to complete, have they provided proper bonds and everything that we always have?
Yes, sir.
Or we have the financial means if they don't?
Yes, and I believe it's eighty-four thousand, eighty-four something.
Everything you want to add?
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, the agreement to complete that was approved last time with final plat, you know, covers this, this allows, you know, home builders to at least get started with their basements, which this time of year is starting to become pretty critical, so they'll be working on that at the same time as the developers, contractors are working. Punch list, they did make substantial progress, if you look at this punch list compared to where they were two weeks ago, they did, I mean, just, I can't guarantee that they'll be done, you know, I can't do that, but they did make a lot of progress between the last meeting and this one.
So to restate that, my benefit is us being as flexible and prudently allows to let business, so our potential homeowners and builders get going, given the weather and everything.
That's right.
And I think it's also worth noting creativity from staff level perspective for being willing to work and find a way to make this happen. I'm nudging over you, wait.
Procedurally, does anything have to happen to I before I jump to A?
No.
No.
Then I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty seventeen one twenty-eight.
Second. Questions and further discussion?
Why are we doing one twenty-eight before twenty-seven?
One twenty-seven would be the exception of public improvements, they're not quite ready. Okay. So you'll revisit one twenty-seven probably November twenty-seventh.
Okay.
And we don't need to do anything with that procedure?
Right.
Take no action on that one?
Take no action.
He just made the motion on that, okay, Ron, second, you got a question? Anything from developer at all you want to add?
Mr. Mayor, John Klein, four seventy-five, House of Rowland, uh, well, Mr. Land, we did bring a check, we have two checks, the city and they are certified, but one sixteen thousand dollars for the seating, which we really can't do until spring now, so you'll have that. The other check is for the improvements which we've knocked that way down, we still have all that money, it's made out of the city, so we're very cognizant, we need to get these things done. We're gonna bring it done.
And I appreciate you working with Gary and likewise.
Gary, close your holes down.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here to answer that question.
Yes, sir.
Motion and second.
Could you read the motion back maybe, please?
Uh, motion to approve resolution two thousand seventeen one twenty-eight approving the issuance of building permits for basements only until such time public improvements are completed and accepted by the city. Roll call.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand seventeen one twenty-five on raising a development agreement with MGR Development, plat of survey, property parcel, parcel twenty seventeen dash one ninety-eight.
Okay, this is, this is kind of complicated, so Amy, Kathleen, jump in here. Gerald Rockwell, as you know, is in the process of subdividing, he's got a preliminary plat there, he's got construction documents in and approved and construction is starting. He needs to close on his home and he doesn't want to close on his home on the entire lot when that's going to be subsequently subdivided. So, a plat of survey has been tendered and an agreement with that plat of survey that basically says that this will become part of plat one, Whitel Ridge, at such time as that plat is accepted, this allows him to have an instrument to go back to the bank and get his final loan on that building instead of construction.
Essentially needed a legal description to do that and that creates, this plat of survey creates that legal description.
For that one person.
For that one, for its home parcel, right, with an obligation on his part to tie that all together when he does this final plat.
Anything to add?
Nothing early, unless there's any questions.
I heard it come in the meeting yet?
No.
Come like a staple, huh? Yeah, you got anything else to add? Questions, comments, motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty seven five.
Second. Roll call, please.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet? Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, consider motion to approve engineering services for southeast Trump sewer preliminary survey, sign or associate it's an amount of three thousand dollars.
I'm gonna start this one off. Before I do, we've been, has a little bit of history. The sewer, the Rock Creek sanitary sewer is what Oak City utilizes to convey its sanitary sewerways down to the WRA. When that was constructed, there was two lift stations, one by our lagoon at that time and the second one across the barrier waters, real close to the far east side of East Southside Drive. When that lift station was put in, it was purposely sized to serve Oak City in the future in areas that were identified between the city and the city of Ankeny as areas that going to be either in Ankeny or in Oak City. One of the stubs, the only way through, the cheapest way through is to go through a area of poor US Army Corps of Engineers property. We had a meeting with them in July of this year to find out where, when and if this was going to be a reality and we were told that a number of items had to be addressed and it was probably a two-year process. Now, this is very important to Andy Snetsler, who is in the audience tonight, and Andy in, with his properties is looking to further develop in this area. Now along comes Jeff Walters, who makes a few phone calls to Rock Island and all of a sudden, out of nowhere, the Corps is very interested in this project and are encouraging the city to start the survey work that is necessary in this area. This is huge. If I may go to a map that would have this on it, and I think I'm going to go to this map here. The area we're talking about is Andy Snetsler and his mother Gwynnivee own a large portion of this area. This trunk sewer was designed to work its way in this direction, and so doing, those areas in here that are within the confines of Oak City, or Oak City that we will know in the future with the development agreement that we have with Ankeny on annexation, will serve this entire area. This is huge. To get the Corps to even say, yeah, we're interested in seeing how this is going to work, we're interested to see this go through. Preliminary cost, put this sanitary sewer at four hundred thousand dollars, alternate route, the least expensive, one point seven million. So you can see why this is on here, why it's so important to us and this starts getting the preliminary survey work out of the way. There's a certain time that you go, get to go out and look at Indiana bats, take care of tree counts, this type of thing, and that's between now and December. So, staff is, is asking that we go ahead and sign this engineering services agreement and start this process.
So, that sounds good, just to restate, so the primary purpose is to connect this to potentially develop a land that's our, in Andy's property, that's already within the city's notes?
Yes.
To be annexed, to uphold that.
Exactly, that will eventually come to.
That's not where we're at.
Right. That's exactly right.
Correct if I'm wrong, but this is basically been our long-term plan for a long time.
Yes and yes, I mean, we just never thought this was going to come.
Sure.
At least not this one. We're spending three thousand dollars tonight, it's pretty easy, what is the long-range cost, how much will we have in it altogether? Well, the construction cost that we're looking at right now was four hundred and fifty-some thousand, I'm, it's, it's a little bit one way or the other, and we're paying that. Well, I think we'll end up with that through a TIF agreement. Pay for the public improvements. So basically, new housing paid for. What happens, we've had TIF programs before that didn't go through, then what happens? Are you following me?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And, while that's always a possibility, there will be ways that if, if for some reason that falls through, we would abolish the urban renewal area and probably pick it up with another form of sewer search agent. So there's several ways to skin the cat. But it will always be our pocket. Not necessarily. We haven't gotten that far into this, we, this thing came, this literally developed over a Friday and a weekend. Do you want?
The only thing I was gonna clarify is just that this covers realistically only the data collection, just the going out and counting trees and, and the field work that's necessary to, so that we would be coming back with you, to you for the separate, separate contract that would actually be compiling this, making a report, doing, going through the permitting process and determining, you know, mitigation where needed, those kinds of things would be a light thing.
And I understand that, but I'm trying to look to the future.
Yeah, I, yeah, we just haven't, we haven't got that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any problem improving this, but when it comes down to spending four hundred thousand, oh. You know, we have streets that haven't been touched, one that's been in the process for, what, three years now?
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is something that will need to be done.
Either we do, either we do it today?
Yeah, that's just.
Or we do it. Oh, yeah, I have no problem with this tonight.
No, and then this part, I'm talking about the money that potentially could be spent in the future, will have to be spent, it's just a matter of doing it the most efficient effectively currently, but I know where you're coming from with, what currently needs to be done.
Well, I don't.
But it feels, feels like it's a savings.
Spend this four thousand dollars even if this ground isn't developed?
No.
Well, I, right, no, I'm, no, I'm with you, I mean, I'm just saying.
Well, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to get my head around that.
We're forced to do it, or we do it and then. Fall. Friend.
Get a motion.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet? Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five, consider motion to approve resolution two thousand seventeen one twenty-four setting public hearing specifically for seventeen, the budget amendment, number twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen six thirty, motion?
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
DeBorak?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Motion carries, sorry, didn't mean to cut you out there. Item six, consider motion to approve first reading ordinance two thousand seventeen one thousand, amending sidewalk ordinance, chapter one thirty-six. Gary, Amy, somebody want to talk about?
It arises because of a, a case that came down and an ICAP recommendation to us that we needed to revise our sidewalk ordinance to be very specific that citizens have, or the property owners have liability for the sidewalk maintenance and snow removal. We have it in our, our ordinances already, but not specifically where they wanted it to be, so it's essentially adding two sentences, one in the snow removal and one in the maintenance and repair section to make it very clear about the liability issue.
So we are in no way forcing sidewalks upon anyone.
That is correct. But this ordinance, we, or under the law, I mean, to, unless we assess.
Shake a little when you got the agenda, when you saw sidewalk ordinance on the floor?
I don't want to see that word after.
The intent of our current ordinance is there, but it doesn't need a wording that the Iowa support now says must be.
Your motion to approve ordinance twenty seventeen one thousand?
Second. Roll call. Oh, wait, Ron's got a question.
How, do we enforce these, now what we have now, and how will we enforce them in the future?
There isn't any enforcement here with this, this just is the liability and the liability now lies the adjoining property, it just clarifies where the liability lies.
Okay, then, scratch the second part, first part, do we enforce it now?
Well, we, if, if there is a case, it would, we would try to enforce the liability issue onto the adjoining property owner, but that would go through court. This would make it clear that the adjoining property owner has full liability.
Are you asking if we enforce the snow removal on the sidewalks or the repair of sidewalks? And I guess, I look at police chief and, and.
I for one would suspect we do not force the sidewalks maintenance issue or how did Broken Arrow get away? All of those years with the sidewalk out there, the, the point should have been closed for decades.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Sarchet?
Motion carries. Item seven, consider motion approved third reading and adopt ordinance 2017-700, vacating certain easements in Big Creek Technology Campus, Plat One.
Basically, this is a turnaround. You've had the public carrying on this, you've had the first and second reading, now that we have construction going on out there, we can take the third reading and adopt the ordinance. So move.
Sarchet?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Devorek?
Yes.
Mordini?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item seven, mayor's report, first start by wishing Mr. Mahanna a happy birthday today.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, is that what the flamingo's?
You don't ask about the flamingo.
Okay, I'll ask later. A couple of quick things tonight. Number one is, just want to rehash kind of where we were and where we came from. We had city election last week, and so first start by thanking Councilman Mordini, Councilman Lane, for what I believe is a combined 28 years of service to Polk City. If I'm off by my, I apologize, but I tried to do quick fuzzy maths tonight. I want to thank all the candidates who did step up and try and run, and everybody who ran for public office, five people running for two seats, that's a good sign of things that are going on in Polk City. I want to congratulate council-elect members Jeff Walters and Mandy Vogel, looking forward to working with both of you guys. Finally, thank you also to Polk City for allowing me the opportunity and to serve the community for another four years. I'm truly excited and looking forward for the future of our community. Quick stat, though, in looking through the recent election polls, Polk City actually had some of the highest voter turnout of anyone, had almost 20%. Now, again, that's low, but when you take a look at around most of the rest of the metro, they were 4, 6, 8%. So I'm pretty happy with our 20%, and I kind of think that maybe we've turned a corner here in Polk City. Couple of things I had going on the last couple of weeks. I got an opportunity, a couple of weeks ago, I got to go speak to Mrs. Young, seventh-grade class, Mike Watson, North Polk, a couple of weeks ago, so leadership class that they had, and asked if I'd be willing to come speak to them. I know this can, you guys keep comments to yourself down there. But I did, it was, it was actually, it was a lot of fun. I got the chance to kind of share my story, how I got to where I was, thoughts about leadership, community involvement, and basically just giving back. So it was a really fun opportunity, and one quick stat that I heard from a very reliable source, my daughter, that Mr. Mark actually presented the night before I did, or the day before I did, I apologize, and judging by the questions, I had more questions than he did, so just throwing that little.
Hard time explaining yourself?
Exactly. Good, good, good take. Gary and I had an opportunity to attend Library Board meeting last Monday, which is the first time I've been to a Library Board meeting for about a year. But other than that, that Library Board has turned over for the most part, and it's virtually an entirely brand-new board. And they asked us to come and kind of give a quick, brief update about city budgeting, but also to hear some of the exciting stuff going on in and around the library. And it was actually an informative thing for both of us to go up there and do, and I appreciated the opportunity to go up there and do that. Quick reminder of the square lighting on December 5th, which I think that Gary will hit on his stuff as well, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., light at 6:00 p.m. And lastly, today, we got some really good news this afternoon that none of you have been aware of yet, but I'm here to release it. And so we received two different emails this afternoon from the Iowa Department of Transportation regarding the traffic control TSIP program. These were a couple of grants that we put in for, or requests that we put in for, and this was actually done by Justin Jackson, so my sincere appreciation to him. Both of these, we were honestly, didn't, quite honestly, I'm not going to say we didn't think we were going to get, but the bottom line is, is we did. And what's even better about it is these two different things that we were awarded tonight, we received full funding for both of these projects. The traffic control safety device category, the TSI program, actually saw funding for four times the available amount of money that was being requested, and we received full funding on both of these. So I think that that, again, hats off to Justin and staff here for working these through. But first off, we received full recommend, full funding for $30,000 towards the two crosswalks to install rectangular rapid flashing beacons at the intersection of South Third and Dorn and South Third and South Side Drive. So that's $30,000 that we got there. And secondly, the bigger one, again, which I think that we were a little hesitant, think that we were going to get, didn't really want to come out and talk much about it, we received $90,000 towards a new traffic signal at the intersection of 415 and South Third. This is a big get. We've still got a couple of other things that we're out there working on. We're really still gunning for spring of 18, spring, summer of 18, to work through these two projects. But this is, this is a, this is a, kudos, hats off to our staff for working this through. We didn't think that it was prob, I mean, to get, to get full funding when they had four times the amount that was being asked for. This was between us having a speed trailer that Polk County helped us pay for, you know, four years ago, I think, that's able to actually do traffic counts. The Iowa DOT, because they do need to work with us, and we need to, do need to work with them, Gary, Kathleen, Justin, everybody involved in making this happen. We've got, like I said, we've got some other requests out there for some other funding, specifically regarding 415 and Third. Feel pretty confident about the other two that we spoke to just a couple hours ago, and pretty confident when all this wraps up that this will be a relatively good project for hopefully a small amount of money. That's the game plan. So anyway, congratulations. Good job to all you guys and your team and everybody else who made that head. With that, that's all I had of Mr. Mordini.
I just want to put out a thank you to everybody that ran, the seats that were up, regardless of where they finished. You guys, it can take a lot to put yourself out there and take that chance, but it's good to see that people are standing up for the community regardless of where their views may lay, and taking the time to do that. A lot of people like to sit around and talk about what needs to be done, and some people actually, you know, do what needs to be done. So with that, I'd say thank you for showing interest in putting yourself out there.
Sarchet? I'll echo those comments. Expand on another piece of news from Tuesday night, which was the local option sales expo in Dallas County, which was a direct decider for one in Polk County. It sounds like it was being pushed by a number of groups, partnership, a few specific areas. So I think that's going to make it interesting for us from a budgetary standpoint, but we can handle, just need to keep an eye on. I do want to comment on the parks meeting that I went to, and just want to make sure that it's not because our liaison is deficient in a way, very capable, but did catch wind of a number of folks coming specific to Zimmer Park and some plants there, and they heard very clearly that the dog park is not something they wish to have, and we're going to follow through on our plan to spend some money for, one, to spend money, and two, to continue with the neighborhood parks if we don't listen to the residents that are there, or not doing our job. So to me, I heard, I heard from the group, you guys can speak differently, feel differently, but they're very happy with the improvements and the investments that were made to purchase that park and kind of take it to something that wasn't, make it a little bit more useful, and heard a lot of good things about where it's at, maybe make some tweaks going ahead, but are in a pretty good spot with that. So it was good to hear from those folks, and I appreciate them coming up and speaking. That's all. Happy birthday.
Come booms.
I was going to say that, but I thought it's too far down here for.
I'm a little closer.
Wow. Mr. Lane? Oh, my goodness. I'm not guessing that one at all. He's, he's within shot, like.
I don't have too much to say also. I want to add my thank yous to everybody that ran. I'd like to extend my congratulations to Mandy and Jeff for winning. And I would throw out there that when I first got on here 16 years ago, I attended the Iowa Leadership Academy by the Iowa League of Cities, and I found it to be very, very useful. Would highly recommend that you guys would, would take advantage of that.
Mr. Anderson?
A couple of things. I have a question, I alluded to it earlier, about where we're at on Davis Street. I've had questions from residents up there again, and other construction season has come and gone, and nothing's happened.
Council set the taking of bids Wednesday?
Yeah.
The 15th, and you'll be acting on them the 27th. And to note, we're still waiting for Mid-American for gas and electric. Can we go without them? No. Hold are in the way. Still waiting. Very frustrating.
And that initial contact was made?
Over a year ago. Very frustrating.
Okay, well, I just want to, congratulations also, and thank everybody that ran. Rob hit it right on the head. It's, it's tough to stick yourself out there, and even tougher once you get in, I think, with the criticisms, and everybody wants to tell you what's wrong, nobody ever wants to tell you what's right. So thank you, Dan, Rob, and I've enjoyed serving with both of you. I wish you the best, and hope you don't just go away.
Not done yet, we've got a couple of meetings. Yeah. I'm not saying goodbye. Good. Devorek?
It's always our last echo, obviously, congratulations and thanks to all that ran. I do understand the nerves, the time spent learning about current events and what's popular, what's not, you know, not everybody is always going to be happy. We, I think, may send, which I know you love that word, into the parks meeting. We, we learned a lot, and I loved having the full house because that's really the only way to gauge a community and those things that are going on around that we don't hear about in those communities that are affected by decisions that we make, and we're not always particularly asking those that are right around there. We do, but we, you know, maybe need more concerted effort to do that. They took the time to come in, it was a full house. I thought it was very productive, I believe Ron and Rob agree with me, and basically, as Rob said, you know, the dog park is probably not going to be the best idea over there. And who am I to say that we should put one in? I don't particularly want one in my backyard either. So I think that was, that was very productive. There's more, there's another bite of the apple, as I think Mayor Morris mentioned, we can, we can do some different things after the preliminary plaques, or the Snyder does some of their parks recommendations and some different things to come through. So we can change that. And also reiterated that we are, we can't put all our money into one park that we're really working on, the different areas that were, will be affected by the growth that we're putting together to really establish the infrastructure for those parks, putting in the sidewalks, picking up some benches, some different things that really will accommodate the usage of them, and then work on the amenities as we move forward, any amount of money that we're putting forward to those, those parks as well. So it was a really good meeting, and I think it was, I asked those to, those folks that have ideas to come to us in that way as well, to the parks commission, and we're always open to talk to about that. Appreciate Rob and Ron as well.
Make one more comment on that parks meeting, from watching it, but specifically, I had had contact from Leslie Demme, Jack White, a couple of different times in the previous weeks leading up to that, and had encouraged her to come to the parks meeting, which they did, and Jack went door to door and got, you know, and visited with a lot of neighbors, which Jack does, and I appreciate Jack going around and doing that and bringing forth that. But that easily could have been something that they could have brought to the council, and instead, they went through the right procedure. They went to parks, and I think that the chairperson of the parks job also did a phenomenal job, and I think Josh Reed did a great job. You did a great job, as well as Hannah, and I just think that, you know, the system worked exactly how it was supposed to. When it came to parks, they heard the concerns, parks board's now taking it under advisement, this isn't something for us to deal with, and they say, doing a good job right now. And once they get the recommendations back, kind of figure out what to do. I think the process worked really well.
That was a great process. I like that with everybody.
If I could, if I could come back in, I left it out, but Councilman Devorek and Chairman Reed both did a good job at the meeting, and I don't know if anybody, everybody went away happy or not, but I think everybody went away with a better understanding of where we're coming from as a city. It's, I went outside and talked to some people afterwards, and it sounded to me like if the city would put a slab in up there, that they could come up with money to put some picnic tables or benches.
I'd like to piggyback on that. I know, there's obviously, judging by some calls I received, people who are watching these videos, doing here at home, not that I think we're going to win any awards for viewership, but you will. Well, it's a sad day then. The one thing I've heard time and time again, and I also received some emails and correspondence and other social media, that a lot of people have a misunderstanding that that land was donated somehow, and that we're supposed to be following the wishes of the people that donated it. Well, I hate to ruin any good rumors out there, but the land wasn't donated, we purchased that land. Furthermore, I would go on record as saying that we've spent more money on that park already cleaning it up than we have even looked at spending on other parks that we've had our eye on for years before. So I just want to put that to rest. I don't have any position on what park goes there, I think that's what the parks were to decide, that people live up there. But just to set the record straight, that wasn't donated land. It wasn't donated, I guess, but had some money to be returned.
And that was admitted at the parks commission. It was admitted that it wasn't donated. And we knew when we bought that land, it was going to take a lot of cleaning.
Yeah.
We knew that.
But where I'm, where I'm going with that, and I, and I agree with you, Ron, where I'm going with that in other areas of town, we knew there was cleanup, and these parks were sat stagnant for a couple of years. After we purchased the land, not given to us, as in many cases with developers, after we purchased that land, we immediately went to work and spent a lot of money up there getting that to just the condition it's in now. So I just, I think it's important that people know, because otherwise, false information gets spread about what's going on up here sometimes. I think it's very important that people in that neighborhood and elsewhere know really the truth about what's going on up there. Thank you.
I'll call that council discussion. City administrators report.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, Davis Street has bids on November 15th, that's this coming Wednesday. Hopefully, we have good bids, and we will present what we have to the council on 27th and start moving forward. We hope to have Mid-American out of there sometime before construction starts, keep your fingers crossed. Lights on ceremony, December 5th. We're going to change that up a little bit. Santa is now going to be at the fire station. We heard a lot of complaints this past year of having to stand outside for an hour, waiting to talk to Santa with the kids and everything, putting them in fire department. We can route it in such a way that everybody be basically out of the weather. My hat is tipped to Councilman Sarchet, or Councilman Mordini for coming up with the idea. Fire department quickly embraced it, and I think it's going to be a good test, but I, I think this will, until global warming hits a 60-degree days in the 1st of December, probably be a good idea. It also helps with the events that are going on at the community building itself, community center room, is there's a lot of businesses that aren't around the square that's set up, and this will help be an avenue over to those businesses as well. So I think that's going to be good.
And the jacket match first. Right.
You, just real quick, you do realize that if Mordini recommends, you just threw in global warming, you're grabbing.
Throw in a Hillary reference.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you throw in napkin, we're just good to go. Keep moving. Keep moving.
Well, I get, I get a little bit of leeway because of age.
It's all right, you can't hear what he's saying down there, anyway. Keep going.
That's funny, they were cutting me any time.
Also, Hug Drive is probably closed today, if not, it'll be tomorrow. It will, it will be cutting a, not we, but the Whitetail Ridge, Gerald Rockwell, be cutting a 12-inch water main into and across the street. This is going to be a huge water main in the future of Polk City, in both circulating our water within the system as well as. This is going to be a huge water main in the future of Polk City in both circulating our water within the system as well as going and serving areas that do not have water at this time. I think that's a huge deal. With that, Mayor, that is my comments.
I know this is a good thing for the city. We need to have it done and everything, but I worked construction for a long, long time. Somebody has got to explain to me how it's going to take thirty days to put a twelve inch pipe across a twenty foot road. That just sounds incredulous.
Well, if it can get down quicker, I'm sure that it will be. But a lot of it has the pour back of the concrete. Make sure that it has the significant breaking point strength and that type of thing.
Yeah. Cementure will still be poured by the end of the first day. Attorney's report. Engineer's report. Public works.
Speaking of water mains, we will still have a, you'll see the intersection down here at Third and Bridge Road somewhat diverted for the, for the tee to be placed under the pavement. That's where the water main is in that area for the crossroads townhomes. That will be happening here fairly soon, but they've got a good plan. They're going to, they've got the plan set, I guess, the diversion plan. But it'll be a little tight through there for the contractor, but I think the plan will work. They've got the diversion, we've got that wide lane in the middle that you're not supposed to be in and we've got them diverted into those areas. So anyway, that will be here coming up.
So no closures at all?
Should not be, no. And to your point, you know, you'll dig it, you'll have it done probably in two days, but then the concrete will take some time to test out. And the cooler weather, it usually takes longer to test out, usually. So anyway, that being said, that's going to be a little dicey down there, but full open.
And you have conflict finance? Fire department, police department.
Just got a quick update on it. Issue was brought to our attention. I'm sorry. Assistant was up here on, on Third Street. It was, it started about the speed. Turns right up when she pulls out of her driveway. About the speed of vehicles coming down the hill towards downtown here. So we deployed our speed trailer over four days. It'll last four to five days. The solar power depending on the sunlight lasted four and a half days from Wednesday, October eighteenth until the twenty-second. So it ran on two weekdays, two weekend days. We pulled it an hour, we had stopped working because of power around midnight on the twenty-second. So we pulled a statistic from that, did a report. It's the same as any other area we ran in town. There was no outliers there as far as the speeding concern for us. Around fifteen percent of people drive by that sideline where we put are speeding. There was no really high speeds there. There was no intense traffic patterns there that caused any concern. I'm not traffic engineer, but there was nothing there that I saw that would trigger us to move forward trying to change anything with the roadway or, or speed limit, speed zone changes. We did conduct enhanced enforcement there. I had officers doing directed enforcement at times of the day and they would sit down here by city hall, radar cars down the hill, thirty-five and twenty-five. That also, it's more anecdotal. We don't have stats. They don't necessarily sit and write down all of their stats for those. But the officers that I had, two of my day shift officers, report back to me said they didn't see anything that was alarming to them there different than any other areas in town that would run speed enforcement. So going back to my recommendations, I don't see anything that would be improved on by moving the twenty-five mile an hour speed limit farther out. It's one of the options that we discussed. And the only recommendation I would have, I have seen other areas, I can't remember off the top of my head, there are a blind driveway sign. It possibly placed further up the hill and to the south there, but that would be something for engineering to look at, public works to look at. More people there is a driveway that's difficult to see as you come around the curve there. And wrapping up, the police department will continue to monitor that area. We'll deploy our speed sign back up. They're getting quiet rotation, a lot of requests for that speed sign. So it's not getting each area frequently because there's more locations to place that. And it does take a while to charge up or done. That's what I have. You guys have any questions for me?
I do on that. Do we have anywhere where we can point people because it's getting to be a trend? And I don't think it's a Polk City specific trend, but everybody's speeding through here. And we put the radar out there and find out that it's that fifteen-ish percent. But until we know that, then, and I don't want to make it so you guys have to jump every time, get one of those complaints. But I do want to be somewhat reactive as well. So is there anywhere we can point people to the areas down that? Some of those statistics on the website, do we publish any of that? Does, I'm not, maybe that's not a good idea. I don't know either.
No, that's a capability I would seek to have, sure, but require some website updates. We've looked at other things I would like to have on or have a separate piece from our website link to the website. That's a, that's part of a lot of a much bigger plan. Probably takes more time to put out. If people want to contact us about how, how we deploy it is based on how many complain in a certain area, basically. And that's our, how we measure the need for it. And we try and keep on a regular rotation to high traffic areas to let us know if we do have, you know, outlier. We're seeing a lot of fifteen, sixteen mile an hour over the speed limit, you know, a larger percentage than normal because the, that's going to make necessarily make more accidents. And my experience, and this comes from a lot of speed monitoring that I did in my previous agency, but cause more severe accidents. So your accident numbers may not go up, but the severity of the injuries and accidents go up with the higher speeds. And so those areas, then we turn around and then we conduct enhanced enforcement on redeploy the trailer there to see how that, how that shakes out. As far as your specific question right now, no, we don't have the capability.
Okay. And maybe that's the model that, that makes more sense. I'm not, you know, pushing for anything in particular. It just seems like you hear this, the results are the same, but it doesn't support the fact that everybody's speeding through a particular area. And, you know, that's hard to dissuade people that, you know, see some of those cars.
Those driving behavior are pretty consistent across roadways and the percentage of it that go ten over, you know, being ten and twelve over. I mean, that's been worn out throughout my seventeen years of working on law enforcement. Does that mean there's never a problem area? Absolutely not. There are areas that where we may say, hey, we're changing this zone here or our enhanced enforcement isn't working or we're seeing more accidents in that area. There's all these data sets we do, we do monitor, you know, like, then we look at the accident rates in that area to make sure that we're properly enforcing it and working with the other state departments to make sure that's engineered properly for traffic during it as well.
Yeah. And I do appreciate you guys listening to that kind of stuff too.
Yeah. But basically, short answer, have them contact us and we'll give them information, their request, and we'll do our best to deploy resources to address their concerns.
I got one more thing before you go, because we're about two months in and only because I live up there and I invite every day and I watch it close. How's the new school stop situation working out with combined with the flashing lights over on Parker? I kind of have seen it.
Things work very well.
I do too.
The, I think I brought up the last meeting, too. All the intersections, I've watched the West Side Drive on particularly because I think that's probably our busiest one with, with the children or school traffic. And that has, has really seemed to work well.
The flashing lights are bright and they work really well, in my opinion. So that's why I wanted to ask.
Yeah. And children are using it and the parents are using it more. I don't know if that's the newness of it or they actually see the cars. I mean, it really gets your attention. Anybody has driven by one of those when they are activated. And to kind of piggyback on that, the West Side Drive parking, I talked, spoke about that last night. It's going very, very well. All the parents are parking before we launch them on the north side of the road. Kids are getting safely, the vehicle's out across the road. Thanks to Mike and Garrett who worked with that with Snyder as well, get that set up so they don't cross the street. So that kind of backside drop off pickup. Like overall, we've made some significant strides with the traffic safety of pedestrians up around this area.
And that rollout seems to be still working pretty well. I thought so.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I didn't keep track. It's hard to keep track of all these stuff. We had tons of complaints, we had a lot that the P D for traffic areas that don't make it to council as well. But I used to sit there in the mornings and see regularly one person every couple of mornings roll through the stop signs when there was a full down. I haven't been up there as much admittedly, but I have not seen anybody go through the, the four-way rollout stop.
I know we, you guys took a lot of time and really did your homework to figure out what was going to work best up there for the kids. And I think that's important. And we worked with the school to make sure that it was good for all parties. So I'm glad two months in, it's working as well as it is.
I would say overall, we're much, we have a much safer environment for children to get to school than we did a year ago.
Has anybody run over that stop sign yet? Because they did the old one.
Everybody ran over it. It's fairly substantial. I don't know if the police force built that one. If they, it could work. It would, if somebody hit it, we would know it because the car would still be sitting there.
They have to take it down to shop and re-weld it. That's what they did with the old.
Extra weight.
You held that up yourself, Mike?
That is all Cody right there. I'll give him all the credit.
Nice, give him an opportunity. Thanks. Library, Neighborhood Citizens Group, take motion. Give thanks on it. All in favor?
I, I.
I got two, two minutes left. I want to give them a.
Let's do it.
I was stalled.
Jenny, you got my stuff? All right. Appreciate that.